Business is the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Okay, first item is public speak, so I'm going to go through the list of people that are here. And then if you have, if I miss you, please let me know. We'll start with Kathy and Mike Plazey.
I have nothing tonight. Do you have?
I don't have anything either.
No, we're all set. Thank you.
All right, you got it. Linda Fish.
All set.
All right, Diane Grenier.
I'm all set as well. Thank you.
Yeah, Dave Gastanian.
Nothing for me, thanks.
Wally Barton. Okay, nothing. Kathleen DeRozers.
I'm all set. Thank you.
All right, Caitlin McIntosh.
So I have a problem with unmute. I don't really have anything to say, just here on behalf of the Board of Ed. Thanks for everything you guys do.
All right, thank you. Louise Goodwin.
I'm good. Thank you.
Liz Lowketch.
I I'm all set too. Thank you.
Jerry Kremay, whichever one you are.
I think I'm this one up here. Um, I'm also I'm here to in in order to support the Board of Education. Thank you.
Stephen King.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, Happy New Year, everyone. I'm hoping to see some progress on the open position tonight. And would like to board to consider language to eliminate the issues with ties possibly in the charter. National language that you may introduce at a later date. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Person.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Valerie Bruno.
Nothing at this point. Thank you.
All right, Nick, I believe is with, well, I'll just go, Nick, do you want to say anything? No, I think he's with the video. Is that accurate? Eric, am I right or?
Yes.
Okay, Leanne Hutchinson.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, my computer screen is telling me that you can't. Okay, I wanted to quickly reiterate two items that I had thanked the board for addressing last month that don't seem to have made it into the minutes. One was what appeared to be the purchase of materials that appeared to be addressing the acoustics in the community room and possibly also the senior center, which I had broached that subject in the past. And the other item was treating the roads when we had a small amount of snow, but was accompanied by quite a bit of ice and the town did treat the roads. And I thanked the board for doing that because if you just looked out your window, it looked like just there wasn't much snow, but it was deceptively icy that day. And I just don't see it appearing in the minute. Thank you.
Okay, Joanne Ebert.
I'm all I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. All right, did I miss anyone? Okay, item three additions and changes to the agenda.
I was wondering if we can. Okay.
Go ahead.
I was wondering if we can move the executive session to closer to the end of the meeting. Because of all these people that are on here for other various things, I don't feel like we should have a long executive session first. It should be closer to the end.
Very good idea. I'll make a motion that we add a second executive session at the end of our meeting. We'll call it, we'll call it seventeen A. And I would also like to remove item eleven H. Discuss and act upon setting a town meeting date for those three items.
Just point of record, that would be G, not H. H is the budget discussion meeting date. See whether you want to schedule those for February since that's coming up.
Okay, well, we must be dealing with two different agendas. I'm dealing with the agenda that's posted on the website. And I see it as eleven H.
I do as well.
I do as well.
Okay.
So Eric, I'll sit there and I'll do this. I'll sit there and go with what's out there for the public and we'll call it eleven H, remove that.
That's meeting dates for budget discussion?
That's no eleven H is set meeting date for A solar project at A S B bank line of credit and C fire department tax abatement. And the reason I want to do that is primarily because we don't have the ordinance for the dog field. I did not get with the town attorney on that before this meeting. So it doesn't, none of the issues there are are critical to sit there and get done this month, so I'd like to push them off. But okay, there anybody else? Jeff, you have?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to add eleven J.
Yeah.
Extension of probationary period for commit community center director.
Um, we're talking about personnel issues in the executive session, correct?
Yeah, but we'd still need to act on something. So do we want to add it at the end of executive session?
If you want to do it at eleven J, you can have at eleven J.
Well, do you want to, is this, do you want to deal with an executive session and then add it to the end of the meeting?
That's what I thought we were doing.
Okay, we can do that. That's fine. That's fine with me.
Um, Scott, do you have anything?
Don't.
Anne, do you have anything else?
Um, not at this point. So are we eliminating three, the, I mean, the executive session at five? And putting it just at the end?
No, we're keeping the executive session at five to speak with the tax collector because she's on here and
Okay.
You know, we're going to try to keep it very short with the executive session with just the tax collector. And then we'll go after that, after the meeting is, we get to after public speak, we'll have an executive session where we'll talk about the personnel issues and the other issues that we have to address.
And we can make motions after that as well, Jeff?
I believe that's the case.
I just want to make sure that we can do that after executive.
And Dennis, I'll ask you this question as town attorney, we can come out of executive session and conduct business, correct? He's probably having trouble with his mute. All right, I think he might have answered me. Uh, no, he didn't. Well.
That is correct.
Yeah. I mean, I thought it was, and I guess.
It is correct.
DeRozers giving us some answer. Thank you. Dennis, so he said yes. He texted me because he's having technical problems.
Yeah, Jeff, I'm pretty sure we can. I just want, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. The second executive.
Just wanted to make sure that Dennis weighed in when he did.
Okay, that's good. I'm fine.
So I'm going to make a motion that we we add an additional executive session at seventeen A and we remove a new I, new business item eleven H. I got a second on that?
Okay.
Jeff Murray seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, four, nothing. All right, let's move on to our number four board and commission presentations. Eric, do we have any?
No.
Excellent. So Eric, we're going to move into executive session. Related to item A, which is the tax collectors' collection strategies. All right, thank you for everybody waiting, your patience. We're coming out of executive session, which was five A discussion related to tax collector and collection strategies. I would like to make a motion that we authorize the tax collector to institute a tax sale for real estate properties that have unpaid taxes of three years or more and or greater than $10,000.
I second that.
Right. Further discussion on that topic? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. So that was four, nothing, Eric, on that. Right, we're going to move on to item six appointments, Commission on Aging. We have a note in our packet. Let's one second. It's.
That is page four.
Page four. First, my sincerest condolences to the O'Brien family in the passing of Georgia. She was, she was a neighbor on Lake Road. She's very nice and, you know, sympathies to the family. So the request is that the Commission on Aging would like to have Tess Gross be appointed and have Kathy Delazi become an alternate member. Tess, is that accurate?
Also, there was also a request to make the current alternate, who's Linda Armstrong, a regular member.
Right.
And I don't think Linda is here. I do see Kathy Plazey. Kathy Plazey is that accurate, making Linda Armstrong a regular member? Pointing Tess Gross as a regular member and having you become an alternate? Yep.
Yes, correct.
Thank you. So I'll make a motion that we appoint Linda Armstrong.
Chairman.
Yeah, Jeff, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just heard a question to me. I was at that meeting via phone. I'm not sure who else. Well, I can tell you who else was there. But yes, I was asked to come on board for the Commission on Aging. I did accept. I did not at that time. There was no discussion on who was going to be an alternate. And Linda Armstrong was going to be a on that board as well. So I just want that to be a clarification if that goes into the minutes. There was no, at my time during the meeting, there was no alternate being discussed at that time. So I just want that to be heard.
Okay, so I'm going to make a recommendation that we appoint Linda Armstrong to a regular position and Linda Armstrong and Tess Gross to be regular members of the Commission on Aging and that we also appoint Kathy Palazzi as an alternate member.
Thank you, because Jeff, I had asked that Tess, being the new director, assume my full-time position as senior coordinator on the Commission on Aging. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so I made that motion. Does anybody want to second that?
Seconded.
So Anne Kremay seconded. Do we have further discussion on the Commission on Aging? All those in favor? Aye. All right, thank you very much, everyone, for volunteering for that. Okay. Item seven resignations. We did receive a letter from Carol Lee announcing her retirement. So I'm hesitant to sit there and accept any resignations until I have an opportunity to talk with Carol. And I hope that's acceptable to everybody because if you read the letter, it is a notice of retirement, not of resigning her position, which could also be taken in a different way. So because of state changes to the pension program, Carol Lee is is having to retire, which is very sad. And everybody should sit there and thank Carol Lee. Next time you see her, please thank her for everything that she does for this community. This is something that we have to deal with from a town clerk perspective. We will. Carol just happens to be on vacation right now, so it's a little bit difficult to sit there and come to a resolution. So I would like the entire public to know that Carol Lee has announced her retirement. And then in our next meeting, we'll talk about the town clerk's position. Does anybody have any problem with that? Any other members?
Well, Jeff, she's going, the date was January 31st, correct? So by the time the next meeting, she's going to be gone.
Well, there's, you know, Jeff, there's nothing we can do about her retirement. So there's two different components to this. There's retirement and then there's the town clerk's position.
Okay, so let's just, so, so we're not dealing with the retirement, we're just dealing with.
She, it's kind of like what we did with the chart, last charter revision. Somebody tells us they're doing something, it's done. It's not like we have to approve it. But in this case, she did not write a letter of resignation from the town clerk's position. She put in a notice of retirement. So I just want to clarify it with Carol because, you know, you, Jeff, you and I both know that we need to sit there and work with Carol in a transition period related to that position. So I just want to understand exactly what works the best for Carol and for the community. And we'll implement it. It's so there's nothing we can do right now. We, she's put in a notice of retirement to to take advantage of the situation that's currently there related to the state and the state pension plan. Anybody got anything else they want to add to that?
So I think Dennis is trying to chime in. Dennis, I sent. Yeah.
Yes, we can.
That is wonderful.
Yes.
For you and for me, I think. Anyway, you know, the charter change regarding not having to accept a resignation does not go into effect until July 1, 2025, just so you know. And I don't, I don't understand how a retirement cannot, is not a resignation. But that's up to you to interpret that. That's not, I can't, I can't say one way or another. I don't have any answers to that. And Jeff Murray points out that, you know, January 31st is her retirement date and that's going to be, you know, before your next regular meeting. Just, just saying, I'm just saying, I'm not, I'm not.
And if we have to have, if we have a special meeting related to this, we will need to have a special meeting related to this because it's a fairly important issue.
Yes, it is. I agree. And I think that maybe it's an opportunity for you to say the things that you wanted to say to her tonight if she were here. The nice things about what a great job she has done. And I will echo that myself because I've worked with her for a long time. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody have any other issues on this that they want to address? Okay, I'm going to move on to item eight, appointment of a new board of selectmen candidate. Jeff, I'm assuming that at the Republican Tom Committee, the Republican Town Committee will be offering up a new candidate?
Yes, the Republican Talk Committee will be meeting, I believe it's next week or the week after. And we have a posting in the paper, a notice in the paper till the end of this month.
Okay.
So it would be, it would be preemptive right now to select somebody before that window is, when that window is expired for the notice. And the town committee has not selected a nominated candidate.
Okay, I'm hoping that you get a great turnout. I would hope you get a great turnout and a great number of candidates and we can sit there and get this behind us.
I am hoping so as well.
Exactly. All right, so I would assume, well, I won't assume, we're going to put this on our next meeting agenda, Eric, and hopefully get this done next month, so February.
Yep.
Okay, item eight, town administrator's report.
Okay, so I'm just going to talk about the things, I'm just going to highlight a few things from the court. I'm not going to go over the whole report because we have a long enough agenda. First question for the Board of Selectmen, because I was asked by Craig, are any of the Board of Selectmen members going to attend Division Zero Workshop on January 30, 2025? I've sent you the information a couple of times.
I will be traveling.
Okay, that is a scheduled workday for me.
Okay.
Texas.
Okay, Scott?
I don't think so.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. The second thing is, I just want to publicly thank Rick Langley of Lenko Electric. He was generous enough to donate and install the automatic door opener for the community center. So that is in and functional. That is one of the things that was identified by the senior advisory committee as a priority. So I'm happy that you were able to accomplish that. I would also hope that some of you saw the River East article that John Chaponas was recognized with an award at the annual Connecticut Conference of Municipalities as a municipal champion for his efforts as the co-chair of the Connecticut Association of Assessing Officials. So that they had a nice article in last week's River East. So I wanted to share that with all of you. And those are pretty much the updates unless somebody on the board has questions for me related to my report.
I would like to thank Rick Langley also for a generous donation.
I would like to sit there and I believe Leon Hutchinson had an issue related to the acoustics in the buildings, both buildings. And I noticed in your report and also in the Department of Public Works report that the panels have been received. And when are those panels set to be installed?
I'm trying to work that out with Willie and Susan, our custodians, to install them. Hopefully sooner rather than later. The priority is doing the community center. And once that is done, we'll do the community room. Community center is an easier install, so.
All right.
It'll have an exact timeframe for you.
Okay, any other questions for?
I have two questions for Eric. Do we have a schedule right, right now for the destratification fan install with Lenko?
Uh, we don't. Uh, so it's, it's a question of trying to sync his schedules and the school's schedules.
Okay, so I would like to try to see if we can get that started ASAP because I know we have some, we have some spring, you know, absence, you know, the school will be out for some spring vacation. And hopefully we can start fitting that work in there.
Pretty sure we have a February vacation scheduled.
Correct. So if we can get some of that work done, it would be nice to coordinate with the school and see if we can get some of that work completed at that time.
Yep.
One other question is, I sent an email probably about a month ago about the chip ceiling on Shad Bowl Lane and some of the other roads in town. And how the recent storm events, the, the chip ceiling seems to be coming up and we seem to be getting potholes in the road. I would like to try to schedule something with Jay Tuttle and yourself and some of the Board of Selectmen members to discuss with the contractor the failure of that installation and what we can do going forward to remedy that because we're going to get back into chip ceiling season here pretty soon. And I would like to make sure that we address that as soon as possible. As far as I'm concerned, that was pretty substandard work and the town needs to recover some of that money for the remediation of that work.
Okay.
I, I agree with Jeff and, you know, we both live in this area. It feels like you're still walking, driving on a gravel road and it's kicking up gravel still. It just seems like it's a very poor combination of materials that were used. Long Hill was done two years earlier. It's a lot better shape than our street that was just done. So definitely that's a problem.
I mean, all the board members saw my pictures that I sent. We have potholes right in the middle of the road where they asked, where the surface has come up. And, you know, if we get more storm events and more freezing events, that is all going to buckle and we're going to have more issues. And I would like to get the contractor out there as soon as possible and show them what is going on with the roadway.
For sure.
Because that is, it's substandard work and we need to get that fixed. And the town should not be putting the bill for that.
Eric, what's the difference between that process and the process that was used, let's say, on Lake Road?
A different contractor. The contractor that did Lake Road was the same one that we had so many complaints with for it being dusty the year before. We switched back to Comer just to eliminate the dust complaints because Comer uses a more refined stone than the previous contractor.
I mean, Jeff, if you want to, any sports, like I would encourage them to come and take a look because, I mean, it's terrible. I mean, it is, it is substandard work and we really need to address this with the contractor as soon as possible.
You can coordinate.
Potholes and loose gravel.
Well, we're going to get some gravel coming. The gravel will come up based in the first year of the chip ceiling. But, I mean, we're missing, we're missing sections of roadway that actually, the plow actually pulled up that didn't adhere to the, to the, it was, it's mostly on Shad Bowl Lane where the double chip was, it didn't adhere properly. So the roadway is actually coming up.
All right, Eric, if you can sit there and schedule that, that would be great so that we can all attend.
Okay, and so you want it during the day, I presume?
Absolutely.
Make it happen and I will be there.
Yeah, okay. Also, Jeff Murray also sent us an email regarding the line at the three-way intersection or the intersection at the top of, I think it's Long Hill or the, you know, connection of Hendy and whatever.
No.
What's the situation with that line, Eric?
I think Jay's taking care of that. I just, it just, I think Jay, Jay responded. And I think he's going to try to paint over it again, but we may have to grind that or get the paint off of the roadway because it's just going to keep coming up.
And we can't paint over it?
We, well, we are painting over it, but at night it's, it's highly visible. When you come around the corner, it looks like there's a stop line there. It's, it's, it shows up plain as day, just like all the other stop lines we have in town.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Yes, I have another question. The other day I was trying to call the community senior center and I couldn't get through. I tried calling and calling Town Hall. They tried to, they gave me a number. That number was not in service. I found the senior newsletter or the community center newsletter. I tried that number. I got passed her personal, I know, personal cell phone or what, but she wasn't at the center. I was trying to find the number for the center. And I think finally somebody forwarded my call to the center, but it's hard to know how to get a hold of anybody at the center.
I do know, this, that's interesting. I do know that we were installing a new VoIP system there, Eric. When did that get done?
Hmm, I don't know, a month ago, three weeks ago, something like that.
So I know I've had problems with my system every once in a while because of how it's done. But Tess, if you can, sit there and please look at that and let's test that out tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
Good. Go ahead, Tess.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. Anne, I thank you. I do think that there is a problem in there somewhere. I do have a cell phone through the town and that's the seven nine eight number and people can reach me on that. I was away on Monday at a funeral out of state. So the, we did have the assistant in the office as well. So whatever that, if you call the seven four two seven three zero five in the extension, you should be able to reach me. Other than that, I think it might be something technical.
Yeah, the extension, it was a four-digit extension. And as soon as I hit the first number, I would get some other office in Town Hall.
Yeah, unfortunately, I, I wouldn't be able to have any control over that, but I do think that it sounds like.
If we can, if we can test that tomorrow, Tess, that would be great. All right.
I, I am receiving messages. I received them all day today and messages do go to my voicemail. So I'm not sure what's going on, but yeah, definitely look into that.
All right, thank you. Anyone else for Eric? Okay, we're going to move on to item ten, old business discussion and act upon the following. Okay, we're gonna move on to item ten, old business discussion and act upon the following. Uh, community center signage discussion, um. That actually has to get done, so. That's on me again. I will sit there and get with the gentleman who did the sign on Route Six. He actually did a very nice job and we will sit there and try to get him to sit there and give us something that can go up on the wall. Uh, ten B, the blight and level of involvement. We have a set of items starting in page eleven in the packet about all the blight violations and statuses. Scott, you have any issues? Jeff, you have any issues related to that?
Just the Long Hill property.
Which one is that? The one with the roof?
Yeah, the one with the roof going, it's been open and has debris all over the place and it's not been addressed for months.
Has he come for permits, Eric?
I don't know.
It it actually says working with new owner to to permit new replacement.
That's why I'm asking, because.
The last time I talked to the building official, they did not have. Uh, they did not have permits for for the reconstruction.
No application.
And there is, there was debris everywhere up there. It needs to be all cleaned up and put in a dumpster. There's piles of debris. It's it's an eyesore and and if I was the neighbor, I would be upset.
Okay, so you're making a complaint about that property. Good?
Well, and the the it must, that information must not be accurate if that says that he's applied for permits and hasn't. And and you haven't heard anything.
Well, I'm not in the building.
I know, I know you're not. I know.
You know.
I know.
Um, if you tell me ahead of time you want me to look into it before the meeting, I certainly can.
Okay, so.
I just drive by it every day and I see no activity whatsoever going on on that property. It's been going on probably six months now.
All right, so Eric, just get with the building official and see what's up with two forty-three. That would be great and we can, you can. Send us out an email so that we have this dealt with before the next meeting. Okay, anything else related to? Um, blight and level of involvement? Okay, item C is uh, operating software for the community and senior center. Eric, I know there was nothing else in here. I know we had the gentleman the last time, um. Do you have the the costs related to that software? It was four thousand dollars, if I remember correctly?
Four thousand eight hundred the first year. And seventeen hundred dollar annual fee there.
Yeah, and then uh, I know that you said that um. Columbia was using the software, if I remember correctly. Accurate?
Correct.
Right, and Jeff Murray, did you have a a an opportunity to look at Columbia and their usage of it at all?
Uh, just just briefly, but I noticed other towns such as Hebron. Which is much larger than us, does not use any software. Coventry does not use any software. It is Bolton.
Good.
And I I think right now the level of programs we have right now, this is my personal opinion. That we're probably putting the cart before the horse right now. I think what we have for the level of activities, we could probably handle it with either phone calls or paper signup sheets.
Okay. Um, anybody else? One second Tess. I'll get to you. Anybody?
I agree with Jeff as far as. Getting the software. I think it's premature to get software when we have so few programs going at this point.
Okay, uh, Tess? You're up?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I I do just want to let you know that um, Columbia Beckett Community, um, also Coventry does have um. The program, uh, my senior center as well, Ellington does. There's quite a few that are around that do have that same program. Um, uh, that information was sent to Jeff, I believe that was you, uh, quite a few um, months ago. But definitely I can send that over to you again if needed. Um, just wanna let you know that um, before there wasn't any real paperwork that was out there and in an office setting, and so now we're gonna. We're resorting to using a whole lot of paper and which is fine by me, I can do that. Um, but I think it would be much more cost effective in the end using a software system. Um, if the board decides not to use that software system, absolutely, but that's gonna be time consuming. Writing those things out and doing things a lot more on paper, which would, especially with grant writing and grant um, reporting. And so um, I can definitely do that, but definitely the hours that are spent at the community center. Are extended because of um, the lack of a software system, so um. That's all I, that's all I wanna say.
Okay. Um.
By by all means, if any of the Board of Selectmen have any questions, um, they know how to reach me. They can come to the. Uh, senior center and I'm there from anytime between nine and two, Monday through Friday. If anybody has any questions, they wanna see what's going on, by all means, I would uh, definitely receive them as they come in.
Okay, um. I'm a, I'm a big believer in in software and attempting to sit there and make things more efficient. But Tess, based upon where we're currently at and Eric, where we're currently at, even if uh, Scott voted with me, we're gonna end up two-two. So. We're gonna go to paper.
Well, I just wanna comment that Jeff, Ellington and Coventry are much larger towns than ours. And right now, I mean, with the amount of programs that we have. There's no reason we can't monitor right now, and if it does grow to a point where we do. Need, we do feel a need and seniors embrace it, like right right now, I I don't think a lot of seniors will actually use the app in this on their phones. I think a lot of them are still in the modes where they wanna fill out paperwork, but they wanna come to the community center and sign up, so. That's my personal feeling right now.
Yeah, and 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 Jeff, I understand. I, listen, I. I loaded a couple apps on my father-in-law's phone yesterday. I understand the hesitation for seniors to try to sit there and use technology. I honestly think that um, you know. You just the data that, you know. We need to sit there and understand who is using that center. In total, like because what we're um. What we're having right now is is a lack of info and if software could help us, I'm all for it now. Is it? Is it more expensive than I would like to pay? Yes, and and can we do it without it? Yes. But we have to give Tess some some data points that we're expecting to receive on a on a on a monthly basis. So that we can understand what we need to do to to make uh, participation within that building greater and. While I have.
Judge up to to be devil's advocate here, it's the, it's the senior centers director's position to. Roll that data up and present it to us, right?
Oh, no, 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 I I don't, I'm not saying that, but if you ask me, I I I would rather her. Sit there and potentially take her time engaging with the seniors and doing things with them rather than sitting there, uh.
Paperwork.
You know, doing the the actual documents because you know, there is a lot of graphics arts and stuff that has to get done, but listen.
Yeah, correct, but we do have an, we do have an, we do have an assistant too, right, correct?
This is all.
We do have an assistant.
We do have an assistant and um, and.
Maybe we could put this off for three months, four months.
Someone.
Revisit it.
Oh, no, no, but wait, 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 wait. We have to get the data anyway. So we're not gonna sit there and get the software that's that right now. And we can put it off. My thought, Jeff, is always that if we have these these. Systems and we can use them, then the data and the information can be provided by the system and then. The people that are working in the department can actually engage with the residents. That that's my thought, you know.
And I agree with, and I agree one hundred percent with you, but if we start offering guitar lessons, piano lessons, singing lessons, crafting, all that stuff. Then put it in the report and if we have a justification down the road to for the software, then then we have it, but right now I just don't see it, to be honest with you.
And 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 that's okay, and we're would be okay to to sit there and and disagree related to it, which is fine. The the, the thing is that Tess, you're going, we're going to have to get some data as to the activity level at the senior center. Because. We as a community just need to to be more engaged and as a board. More engaged in what is going on in that building so that we get as much. We give as much, we we built a nice building, we need to make sure that it's used as much as possible. And the software is not gonna stop us from being engaged and being nice people, but. It would be a a helpful tool and we'll get back to it sooner than later.
Yeah, I guess I would like to see maybe like you say, three months. Um, I'm not really sure. What the software is gonna be doing to help. Uh, maybe I missed it with.
Why don't, why don't we sit there?
I don't understand it.
Why don't we sit there at some point in time and you get into the office with Tess and 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 she can give you a little demo and that would be helpful. You know, before we talk about it the next time, all right?
Okay.
Okay, um, Tess, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming to the to the meeting, um. And. Participating there. So now we also have uh, item ten D, the burn app clock discussion. I mean, listen, this clock, this clock, as far as I'm concerned, if it can go into the community center at the town hall, what, when we. Prove that room for strictly in-person meetings. I think it's the best fit for the community. If you're gonna put it over into the, that small room in the community center. I think I look at it just like Jeff Murray looked at the piano. That he wanted to roll, they they want, that we wanted to take a donation on and that where we put it, so we're we're taking that clock. I think it's got to go, I per, my personal opinion and what I'll vote for is if we put it into the town. Community room and we make that a focal point of in-person meetings and as Eric put in his report. And he didn't bring up, but um, it was a discussion about um. Outfitting that room for in-person meetings. I think that's where I would want that clock. Anybody else?
So you're saying not in the community center, but back in Town Hall?
Uh, back in the community room and that community room be identified strictly as a room for town meetings.
Okay. Um, I'm okay with it either place. What I'm thinking is that for, since October. I've been asking for Dennis to get together with or by phone, however, with the clock owner to draw up a contract. Between the town and that, and I wrote him on October fifteenth, November sixth and December twelfth. And he still has not contacted the owner. And I got another letter from Jeff Ballard today. And uh, he went as far as trying to get another attorney. To drop the contract and he talked to somebody who says his law firm normally represents the town of Taland and he said, well, we should be going to our own town attorney and not somebody who's in another town. So I'm coming back again to ask Dennis to contact the owner to set up.
Well, is this, is this board?
Can I say something?
Hold on for a second.
My understanding is I work for the Board of Selectmen and that. I I I I'm not, I don't function that way. I I'm supposed to, there's been no decision made as to whether or not to put it here or there. I could draft the contract very easily. I've done them for.
So Dennis, 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 can you allow me to ask if we can get a resolution on the location? And if we get a, if we get a resolution on the location, then we can ask you to potentially draft a contract. How's that?
Ready, but I.
We cannot, if we cannot come to a resolution on where this clock should go. And we 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 don't have a place for it. There's no reason to sit there and waste one second of time. Drafting a contract that will never go into place. So.
Yeah, I.
Give me one second, Dennis.
Okay.
All right. Board members, do you guys, do you want it? Let's let's vote. If we want it in, if we want it in the community center, then we'll put, if this. Board will vote three people to put it in that community.
I'm voting for the commu- new community center, yeah.
Okay.
Community center or community room? Cause you've talked about both.
The our new building.
New building, okay, so make a motion for it and let's go. Make a motion, Scott, that you put it.
I motion to put. The Burn App Clock in the new community building. And what, I'm not sure which room we're putting it in, but I want it over there. I think. It's a lot safer over there than it is at the. The old Town Hall.
Okay, I'll 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 second this to have discussion. I don't think it's safer over there because that building is gonna be rented for events. So you're gonna have that clock in a room that what are you gonna do? Lock that room while people are having parties in it, but that. Clock, a forty thousand dollar clock is gonna be in that small room in that building. So what?
Well.
And and.
There's cameras in that room. There's cameras in that building. Things have happened in the Town Hall that we never knew what happened. People steal things. It's not, it's not safe over there. Kids have done stuff in the bathrooms in there.
Correct, and and I don't, I don't disagree with you, Scott, but we've had that room as an open uh, as an open room, um. I think we should take that room in the Town Hall and convert it to an in, to an in-person meeting room. Equip it properly, have the chairs set up there permanently. When we have meetings that are in person, that's where we have them. We actually do it correctly. That that's what I would do in that room, Scott. I would, I would eliminate um. The usage of that room for any other purpose but in town, in-person meetings.
That would be, I agree with you, Jeff McGuire, and I think we've put the clock up high enough that we keep it away from. Getting people's hands on it and getting damaged.
Yeah, I would say if we had a dais or we had something, uh, make it, listen, that clock belongs in a museum. It does not, it belongs in a museum. It's 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 a very nice piece of history for our community, right? Have no problem putting it someplace, but where we're putting it is, we have to understand what we're doing with it, I mean. And where it's gonna go and then whose responsibility is on a day-to-day basis. There's a lot of other things with that clock and then. Just putting it into a corner room in the community center, which, Scott, in my mind, with that community center and you and I have talked about this, that community center needs to be used all the time. It needs to be used as much as it possibly can be used, so.
And a lot of people could see it there.
A lot, and it's open for a lot of damage too.
Damage too, yeah, so.
And then, and then if it does get damaged, who who, how are we gonna find out how it was damaged and by who? If it's in the community room, it's gonna be limited to a certain amount of meetings and everything, and I highly doubt it's gonna, the probability for damage is gonna be a lot less in the community room.
That's if we limit the community room access.
Just for meetings, correct?
Just for meetings, yeah, so.
For town businesses and function, town business and functions.
But um. So that was discussion. Anybody else have anything else?
Okay, so I'll vote for putting it in the Town Hall. I have no problem with that either. I'm kinda pushing you guys in the corner so you make a decision tonight. Now we, now you, the guys wanna build it up and put it in the corner and build it up, so what are you gonna do about that now?
No, 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 we 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 have to sit there and have a vote on that too.
I'll vote, I'll vote for that if that's what you want, but you gotta make a decision about how you're gonna put it in there. And there's gonna be a camera on it or something, cause it is a museum piece.
It's a museum piece, I I mean. This goes into, and I don't know where Eric put it, it was in the in a the packet about um. Outfitting that room, like I mean, basically you should have a dais, you should have a a an area where. People sit there and and sit during meetings and there's chairs set up and then behind that I would put the clock, uh, you know. Put it, put it on the wall, but right behind the meeting so that people on camera see it and you know.
Can you put it on a pedestal or you mount it to the wall or what, well, how you, how would you do that?
Well, you have to.
It can be mounted to the wall, but it's about six, six and a half feet tall, you know, it's a grandfather clock.
Yeah, big clock.
Not a wall clock.
And there's some kind of protection around it?
Are we gonna, there's no protection. It's a grandfather clock.
No protection.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, I mean.
So.
Are are we, are we willing to vote right now on on converting the Town Hall Community Room into a permanent? Meeting space?
I think it should be. I think we've been lacking that for a long time. We should, for official meetings, we need a space. All right, and for for in-person meetings.
So.
I have a motion on. I have a motion on the floor already.
Yeah, well, you know, we're understanding, we're discussing. So thank you for participating. You know.
I'd like to amend it to make sure that we put adequate protections for damage. You know, if we have to put some kind of a guardrail around it or something to protect it, then that's fine. We'll have to do it.
Ballards.
All right, so let's, let's.
Foxy glass railings or something?
Oh, that'll be perfect. It'll look great. Let's, let's, let's vote on Scott's motion. So, uh, the motion was to put the, the clock in the new community center, senior center, community.
Can I, can I change that now? Now that we've decided to do something?
We voted.
Okay, you want to pull it off the floor?
I do.
All right, pull it off. We'll pull it off. We're not going to blow down it, so. That motion was rescinded, Eric.
And why don't you make a motion to do it in the town hall?
I, I make a motion to put the Burn App Clock in the community room of the town hall.
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion? Can I make a motion that goes before this one? We vote on it? You know, we probably can. It's probably against Robert's. But again, we need to make, yeah.
Let's do it after Jeff. It doesn't make a difference.
Do it. Um, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, I make a motion that we convert the town hall community room to a permanent meeting space for in-person meetings and incorporate the Burn App Brook clock into whatever design that we do for the space.
Second. I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hang on, discussion, discussion?
Yeah, discussion.
We want, do we want to put a threshold, a cost threshold and because we will probably have to buy some material and furniture to do this, so. We can't just make the motion and just make it open ended. We need to put a cost threshold on it.
That's true.
Well, that would be great. Open-ended Jeff would make it look nice.
So I did meet with the odd of Friday. We won over some potential options for that. Um, she has a designer in mind. Um, somebody that she's worked with in the past professionally. Um, I will try to get back to the board with a proposal and options on what converting that would look like.
Okay.
But I do need some kind of idea of what you're envisioning a budget for that be.
Oh, so why don't we sit there and, um, that's our vision that we do it in next month because nothing's going to happen before next, next month. Next month, we approve the amount of money to spend on.
And we get this table this till next month and then just make that motion then, once we have the cost estimates.
Okay. Eric, can you get that done?
I will try to get you some proposals for next month.
Okay, some reasonable monetary costs related to that, that room.
What do you define as reasonable?
Come on, you can do it.
Bring it to us and we'll tell you if it's reasonable or not.
Give it for a dollar. Come on. You got to find used furniture like, uh, New York City.
Find a low cost, a mid cost, the high cost, so we have some choice and see what possibilities there are.
Maybe, maybe Willa Mantic and, and Wyndham have, are getting rid of their old meeting furniture and we can, we can get Mr. O'Brien to help us with that.
For the UConn co-op, might be getting rid of some furniture too. Who knows?
I think the clock would go well in the Wyndham Town Hall, you know, it's a big place and old.
Sure would.
You got to have security there too. You're going to have to make it secure. It's forty thousand dollar clock.
Well, we're going to lock the room and.
Okay.
Done, so anyway, we'll deal, we'll deal with all that. We'll get with Eric on, on the things that we need to, to make that all work.
Okay, good.
All right.
Thank you.
Item ten E, Solar AES. I don't necessarily know there's any discussion that needs to be had on this, is there?
Well.
Sure, go ahead.
I, it goes with this idea of putting it into the town meeting. Really, the, the solar is the, the school, and the school is the one who's going to be working on that. And it doesn't, the town doesn't need to be involved with the town meeting for that. It's simply the school's authority on that. I don't think it should have to be a town meeting. You've been sent a number of things and information from Valerie and, um.
So do you think, do you think the solar project, Anne, has, uh, is, is is having an impact on the education of the children? Is it, is it, is it an educational issue, the solar project?
Not. It's not a curriculum, but it provides the electricity or a lot of it that provides the air conditioning to make it comfortable and the lights so they can see what they're doing. You know, it's a part of the school and the school, the Board of Education and the, and the superintendent have control of the building.
And I've said this to everybody else, I'll say it to you. If we can't work together on this issue, then you may as well forget working on anything. So I'd like to ask you a question, Anne. I'd like to ask you a question. Why did you vote against the eight twenty-four at your planning and zoning meeting?
Only because it was not necessary.
Not necessary. Okay, so the project that.
That's why.
School project comes in front of a, a school, it's a, it's a building project that comes in front of planning and zoning and you're on planning and zoning representing the town. You don't vote for it because it's under the jurisdiction of the Board of Education.
Correct.
Anne, who do you?
As planning and zoning, we had no.
Come on, come on, come on, let's, let's stop.
No, and who do you work for? You work for the town of Andover or where the, the, the faction on the Board of Education that does not want to work with us at all?
The Board of Education has control of the school building. And we should not be observing, usurping what the Board of Education should be working on.
Okay. Okay.
Jeff, just, just let me, I'm, I'm all for the solar stuff, for the solar project. But what I'm concerned is, and you know, we've had a couple of emails from some citizens saying this, and this is absolutely true. A lot of solar companies will promise you the moon. They're going to say you're going to save all this money. But you know what? That is best case scenario. That's like cloud-free days. That's one hundred percent efficiency. I would be a hundred percent behind this if we had an independent consultant, you know, pay them. It's, it's, it's a small amount of money. Have a consultant look at it and look at the plan, look at the equipment and say, yes, this program is valid. And you're going to expect to, to save this amount of money. And then nobody's talked about that because we're just going off of what the company is telling us we're going to save. And I would just like to know, and if I'm going to vote for this or support this in any way, make sure one hundred percent that what they're promising us is valid.
And, and, and Jeff, I, I, I agree with you. I'm all for the solar project. I am all for putting this on, on the roof. It's, it's, it's a, it's a project that I personally will support, right?
I'll support it too, but I just want to make sure that the numbers are correct.
No, understood. And my issue, my issue is, number one, the entire contract has not been shared with us. We've seen an addendum. We've seen a penalty language within the addendum and the, and the issue is, you know, listen, we're a small town, you know, we, we pretend to be a small town. We have a lot of residents. We have a, a town meeting form of government that has not changed. And it's not that there's any money required related to this project, but there is the potential for penalties. And I personally am not willing to not sit there and have it move forward with those penalties without the town stepping up and saying, okay, no problem. Right? The penalties probably won't happen. I'll understand that. I, I get it, but they're still there. But that's the only part of the contract we've seen. So there's a lot.
I'm just, I'm more concerned about the efficiencies. And if we do have to, and let's just say we do have to repair a section of the roof, what are the cost implications of that?
Right.
I just want to, I want to get all that stuff out in the open so we can discuss it. And maybe we have that meeting with the school board and, and the superintendent and we, and we discuss these, these issues that we have and we get all this stuff open. Maybe, maybe we have them send us the contractor. We, we discussed the contract. We have a meeting and discuss it.
Well, you, you know, it, it's, it's, let's just get past this because it's got to.
You do need to get past it, but I want to make sure what we're doing is the right thing, to be honest with you.
Understood, understood. And, and you can request, we can request that from the Board of Education and sit there and hopefully that that gets provided to us so that we understand what the risks are and what our payout should be.
And there, there also, there also is supposed to be a report on, around Christmas on the condition of the roof.
Correct. And, and all those things, I know we haven't, I haven't seen. So, I just sit there and I look at it in a very simple way that we're, uh, if we can't work on this project together, then, uh, you know, it's, it's, you may as well forget working on anything. So.
Well, Jeff, I think it's a win-win. I just think we all need to get together and get on the same page. That's all.
Agreed.
Well, this town feels like the town can do things with the school building. Most towns are big enough that they have more than one school and they know where the Board of Ed is doing something and the town doesn't have anything to do with it. Where here, the Board of Selectmen and the town think that they can tell the Board of Ed what to do, which isn't true in most towns.
All right, that's good. So now we all understand where we're coming. I'm going to move on to item, uh, agenda number eleven, new business and discuss and act upon the following. The Hoppin' Hodge Event Permit Pending Cert Approval. Eric, I know that's in the package. Have you got any feedback on that? Or, or Jeff, do you have any feedback related to that application?
No, I have no feedback, but I can personally attest to Ken Platt and his professionalism running events and running events for the town in the past and how he's been generous to the town with the proceeds of some of his events.
Okay.
Uh, the last event I think he had, I think he donated enough money for a picnic table on, at the intersection there.
The contact person on this is Janet. Ramico. I'm just making sure it's the same one. It's the same organization.
It should be Platt Systems, I believe, that puts it, that, that's actually the timing service. He's the race coordinator or the race director.
The name of the organ, organization is Hoppin' Hodges Five K, East Hartford. Well, Eric, they, they put this out way early, so I appreciate that. You know, this is not a situation where we have these, uh, this coming back to us, this permit coming back to us a couple of weeks beforehand. So I don't really have a problem. I like having those events in town.
Yeah, he's been doing it every year, so I, I think we could probably approve it pending cert approval.
Okay.
I concur.
Somebody want to make a motion on that one?
I motion that we approve the Hoppin' Hodges Race. Um, what date was that?
Uh, April twentieth.
On April twentieth, pending cert approval for the event.
Second's at you.
Scott seconded it then. All right, further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye. For nothing, okay. Uh, eleven B, a proclamation for the new faux house open in Andover Plaza. Uh, Eric, was this, um, was this related to the, um, I just want to know who is doing the welcoming. Is this the Chamber of Commerce or our economic development?
Uh, so if you look at the last signatory on it, is the Chair of the EDC. Um, but I just thought since we had a new business in town and we only get one of those uh, very occasionally, um, that we have a proclamation ready to go. It'd be great if all the Board of Selectmen members would come in and sign it. It's sitting up on Kate's desk awaiting signature. And we present it to them when they finally get around to having a formal open house with the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah. All right, I think that's excellent. Um, I have no problem. I'll make a motion that we authorize the signing of the, uh, Town of Andover Proclamation welcoming, welcoming faux, faux house to the Andover Plaza.
So we're going to.
Uh, further discussion on that? All those in favor? Aye. Eric will get in there and sign that as soon as possible.
Okay, and I would note that that comes with a fifty percent increase in the number of food vendors in this one year in the, in our town. So now we have three kinds of options for food in little old Landover.
Okay. Um, eleven C, uh, Fire Department requests for self-contained breathing apparatus.
Yeah, so the next two items, uh, are relative to CIP and they were requested by the Fire Commission. So CIP, I just want to give you a heads up on this one. Wally is sitting here with me. So Wally can give you a better description of exactly what they're asking for. Um, this is a pretty large capital request. Um, so I wanted you as a board to be aware that this is coming down the pike. Uh, so Wally's sitting here right, right with me. If you have questions for him, I'm sure he can answer as to what exactly they're looking for and what the rationale is.
Um, Wally, thank you for attending. Can I ask a question though? Um, what is the, the budget cycle that this is going into? Are we going to go into this budget cycle that's open or next budget cycle?
This would be this year's budget, our twenty-five, twenty-six budget year as a capital expenditure.
Okay, so.
July one.
Okay, so July one. So we'd be putting it up for town vote, um, on the, on this budget cycle. So, okay, so I, I read the information. Um, you obviously have eighteen units that are probably twenty, almost twenty years old. And you're looking to replace them with twenty units, so you actually have two extra.
It's sixteen and four is what it comes out to Jeff. Two spare and two for training purposes because when our firefighters go for certification for firefighter one, they need to bring air packs with them. And right now we're pulling air packs off the truck for them to take to school. With this proposal, we have spares for when they go out for service or if people need them to go to school. So we're increasing the actual number from sixteen to twenty air packs.
All right, and Wally, the, the, the number that I saw in the package was approximately two hundred thousand dollar request. So it's twenty thousand dollars a unit? Or, I'm sorry. Ten thousand dollars a unit.
Ten thousand dollars.
Ten dollars a piece plus the straps for the masks. At four forty-one for forty sets of straps.
So four forty-one times forty and ten thousand times twenty. Okay.
I'm sorry. Yeah. So it's two twenty-one, nine ninety-two total package.
Okay, um, and there's no partial doing it, uh, ten one year, ten the other?
No, it's, it's, it's a swap-up. You don't want in time of emergency, somebody having to think, am I putting on this type of an air pack or that type of an air pack? So it's a total change out. We want to do it all at once.
Okay. All right, so that has already gone past CIP, Eric. I'm assuming that that will be in the budget that's presented to the Board of Selectmen before we move it on?
Uh, it is going back to CIP at the next meeting. They had a request for some additional information which I believe Wally will be able to provide them. So you should have a response back uh, for this, certainly for this budget cycle. Um, it sounds to me like CIP is going to accept this. And then the question just becomes, uh, how we go about paying for this? Because remember, we're going to have the new fire truck and the payments on the new fire truck, uh, also. So, um, we are, this will drain. Um, these two items together will be a significant drain on the permanent fund established for the Fire Department.
Okay, so if you can provide us that information because we obviously have to weigh this and in relation to any other spending that we need to do. So.
Understood.
Obviously we need to get this done and it's just a question. So Wally, if we actually push this a year, you could still use the current apparatus that you have. It's just that you're having problems repairing them and getting parts is what I.
The age of them and they're starting to nickel and dime us to speak of. Something breaks down, it's a few hundred dollars to ship it out, have it repaired, bring it back. And these costs are adding up. And because of the age, we think about the reliability as well.
Okay. All right. We, we will sit there and definitely, if you get that other information to CIP, we'll sit there and put it into consideration on what we're doing for the next fiscal year.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions for Wally? Okay. Um, now we moving on to item, uh, sorry. So in the total amount, just so everybody's aware, the total amount, if my math is right with Wally is 217,640.
221, 992 is what I have. Two, 204, 346, 40 for the air packs. 17,000, 645, 60 for the straps.
Yeah. Okay. So it wasn't exactly $10,000 for the apparatus. It was a little bit more. All right. Okay. Uh, let's move on to 11D, the Fire Department Request and CIP Approval for Cabinet and Countertop Replacement in the Fire Department.
So CIP, uh, also had a request from the Fire Department for replacement of the cabinets in countertops, uh, in both the kitchen area and then, and also in the officer's workstation area of the Fire Department. Uh, so they provided CIP one estimate for both. Um, CIP agreed that, uh, took it over the Fire Department, decided they felt it was a appropriate expense, um, based on the condition and what they have. And, uh, they asked the Fire Department to go and provide a minimum of three responsible bids on it prior to approving. So why I put this on your agenda now, because we don't have the three quotes is that we do have the capability and this would probably be an appropriate expenditure for the building maintenance fund because it is a maintenance item. So, uh, I guess my question is, if we do it as a building maintenance item, we don't necessarily have to wait for next year's budget. We have the money in the building maintenance fund to accomplish this. So if we get quotes back, um, and, and the reason I'm asking is that I think for a lot of contractors, you know, if we're getting bids now, it's for a project we're likely to do as soon as we make a decision. That's going to end up being a somewhat different cost basis than if we get information now for something that we may or may not approve next July. So my question is, am I authorized to spend this on a building maintenance fund as something approved by CIP? Um, once the quotes are in place.
Come back with the quotes and we'll prove.
Come back.
I mean, the answer is yes. If you're asking me, I would vote to sit there and take it out of building maintenance, but you don't even have any range of numbers you're asking for.
We have a ballpark of approximately 16,000 and we are expecting to get back two more quotes, Jeff. So we know it's somewhere in that ballpark at this point.
Okay. So the anticipation, Wally, is less than $20,000.
Right.
Okay. And what's in the, what's remaining in that fund, Eric?
Uh, currently there is roughly a hundred thousand dollars in that fund, um, of which some money is spoken for, for the installation of the destrification fans. Um, and there's one checkout standing to MG Masonary. So at, at the next meeting, when we start talking about capital planning, um, we can start talking about what we have earmarked on that fund for various different things. But at this point, we have the funding for this project if the Board wants to authorize it now as opposed to waiting till July.
Right. I mean, I'll sit there and make a motion that we authorize the use of up to $20,000 for the Fire Department Request for Cabinets and Countertop Replacement.
I'll second that, Jeff.
All right. Further discussion on that item? Anybody, Jeff and?
I think it was just countertops. Is that right, Wally?
It's cabinets and countertops, yeah.
Cabinets too. Okay. Oh, I remember. We were just looking at the counters mostly, but yeah.
And this includes installation cost as well or just material?
That was a total installation deal.
And it was in two locations, right, Wally?
The countertop in the watchroom, the front of the building. And the kitchen is where all the cabinets and the rest of the counters would be installed. So there are two locations. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get my head around how many counter, how much linear feet of countertop we have. How many cabinets we have? And if that's a justifiable number, that's all. I'm just trying to.
I don't know. I don't have all of those figures, Jeff, to be honest. We will have the three quotes and can be looked at. And again, if you want to come to the firehouse and look at, glad to show it to you what we have.
Yeah, I'd be interested in taking a look at the scope of the project and actually seeing what we're going to replace. And then actually, I, I, I just, I get a little nervous voting on quote, on things that I haven't seen quotes for yet. So I would like to see what the final numbers are.
I, I have no problem with that, Jeff. Like sitting there waiting till next month until you have.
I mean, we're not going to be able to execute anyways because we don't even have any estimates to issue POs on anyway. So.
All right. So as, as an act of good faith, Wally, that the Board of Selectmen is willing to support that if you bring back reasonable quotes.
That's what's on.
And I, I would like to see just for myself what I'm voting on, like what we're actually physically replacing.
If I remember correctly, Wally, they're like tan, uh, laminate countertops.
Yeah.
No, they're bright red.
Bright red, red cabinets. And every day is original to the building back to 1989. And when you go into the watchroom, you can actually see the damage on the countertop. Why that has to be replaced. The cabinets don't want to close anymore. We've got issues in the kitchen. And again, for your own home, if you're got stuff that's that old, you know, it's starting to show with wear and tear.
Okay. Understood. I just want to make sure we have enough money to cover the replacement that needs to happen. That's all.
So Eric, if you could put that on the next, uh, agenda, and if anyone wants to get together with Wally and go through the Fire Department, um, that would be great. Well, how's your, how's your little dog doing? Is it okay?
Your dog didn't scare me too bad, Jeff.
I have to tell you guys a story. We walk by Wally's house every day getting onto the lakeside and Wally's little dog, I mean, it must be this big. I got a hundred pound dog. Wally's dog might be 10 pounds. And that dog started coming down the driveway dragging a cinder block to get down to see us. Carol had to come down and save him from getting in the road. It was, it was wonderful. Anyway, uh, little town animal. There we go. Uh, Wally, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Wally, for all that you do.
11, 11E, uh, Additional Sign on Route Six. Um, I know we just had the faux thing related to Elaine Buchart, but we really need to probably thank Elaine for all the work she did to try to get that put in place. And, um, now I'm going to make a recommendation that we get a second sign in place and have it facing the opposite direction or have the sign company come back and give us a recommendation of what may potentially be able to get done. So that sign looks really nice. I think it looks great. I think it needs, Kathy DeRocher had, uh, uh, reached out to Eric and to myself about, uh, the beautification committee doing some work around that. Uh, it's something that we need to look at putting into next year's budget, but, um,
So we're going to do E and F together?
Yeah, we can do E and F together. So it's the, um, I mean, after seeing how the sign looks and where it's at, I just think we need to put a sign that faces in the opposite direction. Something that faces in the opposite direction in the same spot. Don't go down the other end of Andover or the other Columbia end of Andover, the Coventry end of Andover and put a sign that has people welcome. Just, it's the, our, our, our main focus is the Old Town Hall and the bridge and across the street that welcome to, and the Veterans Memorial. Those three components really make a nice. And that's what we have. And that sign across the street on that hill looks very nice. Elaine did a great job.
She did. It only took her 10 years to get some money appropriated for that.
Did. Take her 10 years.
We already put the second sign in this year's budget and it was made.
We did.
In the Board of Finance. Okay.
So.
Yes.
So, so where, where the, 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 the recommendation, that, that this is going to go into next year's budget. My recommendation is that we try to put another sign in there. And then we give, we determine how to either raise money or give enough money to the beautification committee so that they can do something to, um, make the landscaping around it look like it belongs there and that it, it, it really calls out the sign properly, other than just having it sit on that side of a hill. So the beautification committee is willing to do that work. Um, we just have to be willing to try to fund it.
That.
You're right, Christian.
We're willing.
So, so Andover Beautification, we are going to apply for a grant. Uh, in total, we're hoping for the whole project, uh, and that will be for the, the welcome sign that's presently there. At this point, of course, won't include the next sign, uh, but I did speak with Elaine. We are looking at having Art, who made that sign, build a placard on the other side of it. So it's not two signs there, but one sign and more to come on that. So basically I just want to make sure that the Board of Selectmen, I don't know if you have to make a motion, but, uh, move that the Andover Beautification can move forward with, um, the, uh, I'm going to say the garden and what needs to be around it so that I can apply for a grant. And we go from there. Thank you.
All right. Well, if that's the case, I'll make a motion that we authorize the Andover Beautification Committee to undertake, um, and initiate a project to, uh, beautify the area near the sign and provide us back with the financial needs that would be required and to also be able to apply for a grant.
Second.
A second. Jeff seconded.
Murray. So any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay.
Just to add.
Should we talk?
Just to add to that, I would like, you know, it, it is the town center, but I think the library and the church are part of that town center. And it would, it would be great if we could put something right, right where the, the connectivity grant that Eric put together somewhere on that hill or at Shoddy Mill in Route Six, you know, a duplicate sign. Because I think we should probably include all of that, but that's just my personal opinion. But, um, you know, town, town center includes, I, I think it would include the library and the church as well.
Understood. So the, when the EDC originally briefed this for, for their original goal was uh, a welcome to Andover sign, one located on the corner of Route Six and Shoddy Mill, fairly near where the old pound was facing Route Six as you come into town from, uh, Coventry, I guess, in that direction. And then, uh, the, the other one where it is now. That was their original concept. Actually, their original concept was three. One big one in the center of town and then two of the ones they made right there. Uh, one there and one at Shoddy Mill. That was what their original proposal was.
And if we're really smart, if we could took the backside of that sign and make it, if we could put electronic sign or something, we could put community events on it. That would even be a win-win. You know, people going to the transfer station could see it. That seems to be a high, uh, visibility point for community messaging. So.
Well, hopefully Elaine can get the second sign up a lot faster than she got the first sign up and maybe we can support her and get the Board of Finance also supported. So, okay, um, did we vote? We voted on the authorization to allow Kathy to get the grant and to, to give us numbers, correct? I didn't miss that. Did we vote?
You, you got it. Correct.
Yes, yes, you voted.
All right. For nothing. Okay. Uh, 11G, uh, we're just going to move on from this. Dennis, we have to sit there and make sure that we have the ordinance prohibiting dogs on the athletic field.
I'll be happy to do that. Just let me know exactly what you want.
Okay.
You and Eric.
Can I go back? One, did we, if we're asking Art for a second sign, uh, are we going with your idea, Jeff, of having it co-located with the initial sign? Or are we going with the other idea of having it, um, located at Shoddy Mill? Cause he's going to want to know where it's going in, uh, as part of this.
Well, if the group thinks it's, it would be better at Shoddy Mill, then put it at Shoddy Mill. I just think that it really, you know, whatever. I mean, he can sit there and evaluate it and tell us what it would cost because maybe he can turn that sign that's in the center of town and put, uh, facing on the opposite side of that sign and it won't cost that much money, but it probably will. So, um, it's probably going to go on Shoddy Mill, but let Elaine do it. Elaine did a lot of the work. She has the, the vision for it, the place that Jeff Murray wants it. That's fine. I have no problem.
There, there's electricity at the first sign. In case they, which they have, they're going to be lighting the sign. So.
So we can do some low, I mean, even at the other place, you can have low voltage solar that you can do on that other sign on Shoddy Mill. Let Elaine sit there and take the first crack on it. Just my opinion is that we need another sign. And, and if the beautification committee is going to make it look pretty, I'm all for it.
Me too.
And Jeff, if we really had our way, I would sit there and take the, uh, the rail trail wall that runs by the library and all the way down. It's about 400 feet of concrete wall and we should have a mural done on that to.
That would be great.
To be positive toward Andover.
So we could run their card on the whole side of it.
Yeah, it would have to be really good.
I just like that, I just like that Shoddy Mill location. It's high visibility. It's like the, the traffic is pretty slow through that area during rush hour. So it, and it encompasses that whole area that we, you know, we kind of want to try to highlight anyway. So.
Jeff, can I say one more thing?
Yep.
It's about the sign, uh, because I spoke with Elaine. She's gone, um, on vacation. She has Art already quoting the second sign that could go on Shoddy Mill and a placard to go on the back of the first sign. So there will be two quotes forthcoming for you to preview.
Okay. Perfect. We'll, we'll get to this next meeting and hopefully we can get this done quickly. All right. Um, we're going to move on. Uh, item H is deleted. We're going to go on to 11I, meeting dates for budget discussion. Um, Eric, what's your recommendation? What would you like us to do? What's your timing?
So my goal is to have you a preliminary budget right around February 1st. So my question for you is, do you guys want to begin budget meetings? Uh, cause you've kind of gone back and forth between whether you want to do them strictly combined with Board of Finance, whether you want to crack at it beforehand or what you want from me prior to, uh, prior to the budget officially be turned over to the Board of Finance.
Well, I would sit there and, and say, I would like to sit there and see the budget, uh, with the Board of Selectmen before it goes to the Board of Finance. I don't necessarily know that we have to, uh, you know, I would like you to sit there and at least have two, one to review what you want to do. And then one for you to revise your numbers related to the priorities that we believe are out there. So, and then it can go to the Board of Finance and they can sit there and, and do their due diligence on what we're requesting. That would be my, I would basically tell the Board of Selectmen, we would have two meetings, one to review Eric's initial budget and, and to sit there and tell him what priorities that we think he needs to make. And then have him go back and make the revisions and then present it to us one more time and then present it over to the Board of Finance. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
I agree. I think we need to turn more of the responsibility over to the Board of Finance. Uh, maybe one meeting with Eric just to review his budget. Maybe one meeting with Eric just to review his budget and. Just basically a general memo to the Board of Finance, basically what our wishes or what we think the direction of the town and the budgetary. Direction should be heading, but I think it's a lot of to ask of Eric to sit through. Meeting after meeting with us and then go sit through meetings with the Board of Finance. So if we can kind of streamline that process. And make it as painless as possible. I, I, you know, we do have a board of finance. We have a lot of small people on that board and I think we need to let them. Take over that responsibility a little bit more and I think we should get a walk away from it a little bit. And just kind of send a basic message of direction instead of just basically trying to put together a budget.
Understood. Well, Eric already has the budget put together because he's doing it related to that, so. I agree with your, your memo and your, you know, what we're trying to get accomplished and why we have certain things in the budget. Because ninety percent of that budget is going to be standardized items that are related to operational items that are. You know, we're not going to change very much and the items that we need to discuss are the items related to capital. Investment and where we want to put it and whether it's the, the. The request for the fire department or it's the request for the school or it's the request for other items. We need to sit there and build that capital fund out so that we can sit there and, you know, either save or get some things done.
I agree, just basically certain light items that we do support and items that we, you know, we feel we could probably hold off for a year or two and. And wait on, but let's, 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 let's let the responsibility to interview boards and, you know, have boards come to them and present their budgets to the Board of Finance. Instead of us and then just, you know, I, the goal, goal is to streamline the processes and make it as painless as possible, so.
Yeah, yeah, I have no problem with that. So does anybody have a problem with establishing an initial meeting in. The beginning of February to review the budget with Eric? Okay, so Eric, do you have a schedule that you want to be on? Do you want to do it?
So it depends what nights you want to do it. You know, if you were sticking with the Monday schedule. You know, theoretically, the third, the tenth and the seventeenth.
Why don't we do the third? As an initial budget review and then the tenth is our regular scheduled meeting and we can review your revisions. Based upon our recommendations. And when is your anticipated date of giving it to the Board of Finance?
I would assume as soon as you guys are through with them. Because they're going to need part of February and all of March to review, given the revised timelines.
Okay, so let's sit there and say we could have the initial budget. Communication on the third, the meeting on the third, and then we have our second meeting on the tenth, which is our normal meeting. And we put that on our agenda to review the revised budget. And is that enough time for you to revise? I don't necessarily think it's going to be. Does anybody think we need more than that?
Do you have, does the board have an idea of what specifics you want from me for the meeting on the third? I mean, one of the first things that the Board of Selectmen really has to do is you do set salary and compensation. For all employees that are not union and not elected. Well, and technically those that don't have contracts. So it's determining what your general across the board wage increase, if any, is. Is one of the first things you have to do as a board. And then, you know, I'm happy to review, sounds like capital is probably what you're most interested in, so I'm happy to. To review capital and capital expenditures with you. Whatever else it is that you have that's a priority.
We have between today, which is the tenth and the, the, let's say. The twenty-first to get you emails as to what our priorities are and then you can try to incorporate those into what you build for us for the third. Is that acceptable? I would tell you on the wage side, you need to come to us with what. You believe and you can email this to us, what you believe the, the rates are out there. And what we should be considering as far as those percentage increases.
Right.
Okay.
Just to remember, these are just suggestions for the Board of Finance. These are not what we're dictating. We're just suggesting.
Well, but actually the one thing keep in mind, Jeff, is that the Board of Selectmen does set the wage and benefits. For town employees. The Board of Finance does not. Board of Finance sets for elected officials. But not for the rest of employees. That is actually one of your responsibilities technically as a board of select.
But that is still approved at public meeting, right? A public referendum.
Yes, well.
It's part of the budget.
It's part of the budget. That's an interesting question. That's a Dennis question, whether they can, the public can change individual people's salaries.
Not individual, but just across the board if we do. I can do it across the board. That's right.
Yep.
Let's not give, let's not give anybody any ideas, so.
Well, it could result in layoffs or something like that, you know?
Let's, uh.
But that's right. No ideas.
Let's, let's sit there and. Communicate with Eric between now and give him to the, like the twenty-first. And then he has, you know, I'm sure he's got the majority of the budget put together from a preliminary standpoint. And then we'll each give him things that we want him to focus on and then he presents it to us on the third. And then we sit there and make adjustments between the third and the tenth and we see what we consider to be a. An appropriate preliminary budget to provide back to the Board of Finance. Okay. Anybody else have any other issues related to that? No. Item twelve, approval of minute meetings for twelve, twelve, twenty twenty-four.
And make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for twelve, twelve, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, you got a second?
Seconded.
And Krame seconded for the discussion. Any issues? All those in favor? Aye. Alright, item thirteen, the treasurer's report, that was in our packet and started on page. Forty-four. Any questions related to the treasurer's report? I do have one. Eric, can you ask her to include the balance sheet? Okay, any, any specific issues related to. The presentation made by the treasurer's office and the treasurer? Okay. We moved on to fourteen, which is the tax collectors' report. That starts on page fifty-five of our packet. We collected five hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in the month of December. In taxes. And then she provided a list of largest delinquent taxpayer reports and there is one tax refund. Somebody want to make a motion on that one?
Make a motion that we do, make this one tax refund to Michael Ebert?
For seventeen dollars and eleven cents. I'll second that. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. I had fifteen departmental reports. There was a report from the assessors office. There was a report from the fire department for the year. They had four hundred service calls in twenty twenty-four. We have to thank the fire department for all their hard work. December was a very low month in the, the building department. This can be expected. And we had a report from Public Works. And I think that was it for reports, Eric, correct?
Correct. I don't think there was anything else submitted.
Oh, I'm sorry, library report. I mean, I forget the library. They were, they provided the report for December of twenty twenty-four. Any questions on any of the reports that were submitted by any of the. By any of the departments? Okay. Do we have any correspondence, Eric?
Nope.
Right.
Not that I'm aware of.
Public speak. Tess Gross.
Yes, sir.
All good?
Um, yeah, my name is Grous, not Gross, just pronunciation, that's all.
Get it corrected.
That's okay.
Alright, Nick Levine. All good. Yeah, CVC. I have a phone number and I believe that's Leanne Hutchinson.
Is this five four seven five?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, that's me. Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Valerie Bruno.
Hi, I just wanted to. Comment on the idea of the solar just to let you know, Jeff Murray, I know you had asked about a few things. And I'll provide more in the future to you guys, but we have in fact had the town administrator speak to our solar person. In regards to the project, we have had a structural engineer and there's a number of other things that, you know, you've mentioned. That have actually already been a part of the, the package, so I will send some more information along just as an FYI. So that you know where we are with that project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Joey Ann Ebert?
I am all set, thank you.
Alright, Kimberly Person?
I'm all set, thank you.
Caitlin McIntosh?
Um, just one comment, when you guys were talking about the community room being used exclusively for meetings. I don't know if you guys know, there is currently an event that takes place in there on Friday afternoons. For kids that are like from kindergarten to second grade. That's a STEM project through the Tallinn Robotics, something or rather. It's really a small area for the amount of people that need to fit into that room and they ask parents to sit at the side of it. I would hope that there'd be possibility for that program to move into the community center. I'm hoping there's more space in there. Also would put a plug in for having some kind of infrastructure or online way to sign up. For community events and senior events. I understand. The idea of putting the cart before the horse, but sometimes you have to do that in order to move with society the way that you need to. Again, thank you for what you guys are doing. And regards to the solar project with AES, we'll definitely keep you guys informed. When we get the results back of the structural engineering stuff that was done over the Christmas break. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen King?
Nothing else, thank you.
Louise Goodwin?
I'm all set, thank you.
David Gastanian?
Hi, Jeff. We were, the fire department was under the impression that. Our request to change the tax abatement would be on the agenda today. We got the paperwork. Dennis made some corrections and I thought that was supposed to be on the agenda today.
Uh, I thought it was too, but it's not on the list unless I missed it.
It is under, I, well, at least on my. My agenda, it is on the list under item G, which was maybe your item H. It was one of the items that we were going to set the meeting date for.
Was. David, you're correct, because we eliminated that item for the town meeting. We eliminated that. We will, we will address that. Eric, put that on the agenda outside of the town meeting setup so that we can have the necessary data and discuss it and get that moving. Okay. Apologies for that, Dave.
Thanks.
Sorry about that, Dave.
Liz Lowketch?
I'm all set, thank you all.
Alright, Kathleen DeRosa?
I encourage the Board of Selectmen to support the software for the new community senior space for efficiency. And reporting. Seniors are not, there are seniors, seniors are sixty-two and up. And there's plenty of seniors that are using apps and programs, so I really encourage this. I think going back to paper, back and forth, back and forth is not a good use of. Our, our director over there and her time, but I do understand waiting the three months, but I encourage you to move forward with this.
Yeah, thank you. Diane Grenier?
I'm all set. Thank you very much. Good job, guys and girls.
Brienne Lenzery?
I'm all set, thanks.
Alright, everyone, thank you very much for attending. Eric. I'm going to make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss personnel issues. And we invite the town clerk and the town administrator. Anybody have any other issues?
Well, how about the town attorney?
You missed it. Your ears were closed there for a second. I did invite.
The town clerk is on vacation.
Is there anyone else I need to, or any, is there anyone else I need to invite in?
Jeff, I just have a question. Can you tell me why you're going into executive session?
We have some issues that we have to address related to. Our town clerk position and I'm sure that Tess, we will discuss personnel issues. And if you would like to come in because we're going to discuss your position, you're more than welcome. Would you like to?
I would.
No problem. We'll have you come in first. Okay, everyone else, thank you very much.